Following the joint calendar of the Health and Human Services and Judiciary nine o'clock calendar, this meeting is being streamed live. Present with me is co-chair Carl Rhodes, as well as co-vice, well, vice chair Senator Gabbard. This meeting is being streamed live on YouTube. Your audio will be muted and video disabled for those on Zoom until shortly before it is your turn to testify. Each testifier, unlike Senator Rhodes, I am limiting my testimony to one minute. Those who have come in front of me know that I'm very strict with this one-minute time limit. If there is a technical glitch during your time to testify, we may have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. I will be reading a list of individuals who submitted written testimony. For each measure, we apologize if the closed captioning does not accurately transcribe the names. If you're interested in reviewing the written testimony, please go to the legislator's website. You'll find a link on the status page for the measure. We appreciate your understanding and remind you that the committee does have your testimony, that I review them, so I encourage you to use your time to either add additional comments or you can stand on your written testimony. And like I said, I'm going to be very strict on time because today's a deadline for the lateral bills are going to die if we don't pass them today. So first up, SB 709 relating to mental health. We have Judiciary providing comments. And United Institute of Human Services in support. Thank you very much. Alan Johnson of HSEC Hawaii Substance Abuse Coalition in support. Okay, thank you. Edward Chu Hawaii Health Systems Corporation providing comments. Ellen Oy in support. Ellen, are you present? No. Gregory Misakian in support. Ellen Godby Carson in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 709? Come on up.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chair. Dave Ntakunaka Administrator for the Adult Mental Division. Here on behalf of the Department of Health, we stand on our written testimony in support of the intent and provide comments, and we apologize for the late testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have, oh, members, any questions? Okay, Senator Rhodes.
Was anybody here from the judiciary? Okay. For DOH.
Come on up, Mr. Takunaka.
Does the Department have any comments about appropriation amounts, either the 2.25 million for data collection and publication or the blank amount for education and training?
The Department very much appreciates the appropriation amounts. It would very much help with the maintenance of the data dashboard as well as our positions. Currently, we use federal funding, and as you all know, those are right now subject to temporary status.
On the blank amount, do you have suggested amount for that?
We do not have that at this time.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Well, I have a question. IHS, sorry, come on up. So according to the late testimony of the Department of Health, they are claiming that they already have a data dashboard using the data maintained by the department, and so they don't believe sections two and three are necessary. Do you agree? Or do you know? I mean, it's late testimony.
Yeah.
I see somebody standing up. Is that what I just? No?
No. She's, I think, with your communications office taking photos. I can't actually speak to that. I'm not too sure. I know that there is a lot of effort to create more synchronized data, and so I think it's if there's stuff that's already happening, we should work together to improve it, but I can't speak to their testimony.
Okay, thank you very much. I guess the Department of Health again. Because of the late testimony, I mean, we were not considering deleting sections two and three. What do you think about late implementation of two and three? To see whether or not you folks can synchronize the data.
It seems from the way the bill is written, there are two parts to this. One is the data dashboard or the data piece, which is something that we are already doing. We have a website, a dashboard at bh808.hawaii.gov, and we currently report on much of what is being asked here on the data that we maintain. The issue that we're having is the data that we don't maintain. For the second part of this, we have noticed that there hasn't been much uptake over the years on the act orders. So since last legislative session, there hasn't been much of an increase. AG's office in Kona went from one to two petitions granted in 2023, and Oahu was one to two as well. Data from IHS, they had nine granted in 2023 and 12 in 2024. Oddly, the petitions filed went from 14 to nine. It actually reduced. Part of it is because they were able to convince the consumers to take the medications voluntarily, which isn't something that's addressed in the bill. You know, I'm a psychologist by trade, and a lot of our relationships with consumers is trying to respect their autonomy in taking medications and also working with them in the way that they are a part of the treatment team and part of the decision-making when possible. Act orders come into place when they can't.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on. Oh, any other questions? Seeing none, moving on. For SB 955 relating to, excuse me, relating to fitness to proceed, we have Judiciary in opposition.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chair, Vice Chairs, members of the committees. My name is Jennifer Wong. I'm the staff attorney for the criminal divisions of the First Circuit Court. I'm going to be very brief because our testimony is very lengthy and very detailed. We appreciate the intent of this bill. However, Judiciary respectfully opposes portions of the bill due to the practical and perhaps unintended consequences of some of the provisions implementation. I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Office of the Public Defender in support.
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. My name is William Bento from the Office of the Public Defender. We do support the bill and the intent of the bill. We have one concern, and that is taking the three panel and making them a two-panel at this point in time, only adding a third evaluator if it's not the same finding by the two members. I just want to point out that rarely is there unanimity in these three panels, and sometimes although the findings might be the same, the reasons for the findings are different. And that's why I think traditionally it's always been three members. Increasing the people who can qualify to be on the panel, I think, will take care of the problem of the shortage, so we would ask that it be kept at a three-panel. There'll be a lot of delays because there'll be a finding by the two-panel if there's need to be a third member added that doubles the time that's necessary for the three-panel evaluation. So that would be our concern. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission providing comments. Jeremy Creekmore Hawaii Association of Professional Nurses in support. Jeremy Creekmore, are you present on Zoom?
They're not available on Zoom chair.
Ellen Oy in support. David Fields in opposition. David Fields, are you present? Come on up.
Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members. My name is Dave Fields. I'm a former clinician at Hawaii State Hospital, current law student at UH Manoa. I respect the intent of the bill. Overcrowding is a big issue at Hawaii State Hospital. I was there most of 2024, but I feel like it's placing a lot of blame on the courts when the issue is actually institutional and administrative at Hawaii State Hospital, and I feel like the bill needs to go further in addressing those things. There's a bill similar to this in Oregon where they kind of had more oversight over the hospital and the Department of Health and things like that, so I would hope the bill would address those things as well. I have more details of my written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 955? Okay, come on up, Department of Health.
Mary Insuji for the Department of Health Behavioral Health Administration. Sorry Chair for the late testimony, but we do support the intent of this bill. We have some recommendations on different parts, but overall, we really appreciate the fact that the legislature is trying to help us with our overcrowding and trying to get everybody into the right beds. Thank you. We'll be available for questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 955? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, Senator Rhodes.
For Judiciary. So some of the, one of the criticisms you made or comments you had on this in your testimony was that going from three to two wouldn't maybe not actually end up being three to two because a lot of times decisions are split.
Yes.
Is there any constitutional problem or any other practical problem that you could see just going to one examiner?
So there was a proposal several years ago when we did the penal code review in 2016 to reduce it to one, and both the state and the defense bar objected to that because essentially what was going to end up happening is they're each going to get their own expert to then counter, which will again delay the, basically.
But is that simply expert? How does that play out in court? Is that they're considered expert witnesses and the judge has to decide?
Yes, there's a provision in Chapter 704 now where they each get, they're allowed, the defense certainly is allowed to have their own doctor examine the defendant.
So, but if you had two and it's a split decision, then isn't it up to the judge at that?
Yes, we would have a contested hearing where we would bring everybody in. The doctors would testify. They would be cross-examined. The defendant perhaps would testify, and then the judge would make the decision.
But wouldn't that mean then that the state only has to come up with one? And then if the defendant wants to get their own, they get their own, and we don't have to look for them?
Yes, the state designate would be the court's doctor, I would assume, under that scenario, and then the defense would hire their own and the state would hire their own if they want, if you were to reduce it to one.
Okay, but then it would be resolved by the judge to determine which expert witness to give more credence to?
Yes, and that's kind of how it is now, that we have three right off the bat.
Right, okay, okay, thanks, next chair.
Okay, thank you very much. I have questions. Stick around. Okay. You are aware also that this bill does not remove the part that says the court may appoint an additional examiner or examiners. So basically, by removing one, we remove the authority from Department of Health in choosing the third, but leaving it up to judicial discretion. Page four, lines nine to 10, nine to 11. The court in appropriate circumstances may appoint an additional examiner or examiners. So it basically gives the court judicial discretion to appoint more. Isn't that right? I'm sorry, that's a leading question. I'm just. So we're just removing the authority from Department of Health by passing this bill to judicial discretion, and you'd have no problems with the judges exercising their discretion?
To appoint three instead of two?
Yes.
Okay, so the second doctor would be, so if you look at the provisions of where those doctors are appointed.
Are still within your list.
Okay, that's the Department of Health's list, however, but so the Department of Health, we get, they certify a list. We appoint our two private examiners from that list, and then they give us the third from within their department. So is the intent to get rid of the third within their department?
No.
Or, okay, so we would appoint one from the list and we get one from their department, and then we could, the judiciary could appoint a third examiner?
Because that remains on, or really any other examiners, that remains on the statute. We're not removing judicial discretion to appoint examiners. So you have no problem leaving that in the statute then, right? Because I mean, I would think you would trust your judges to.
Yes, traditionally, traditionally that provision has been used to appoint additional examiners from the other, from the other provisions of Chapter 704. We've not necessarily utilized that to appoint them in the three-panel. So, and we also do it for when we have to do a neuropsychological examination. That's when we appoint, it's basically a fourth doctor when they recommend a neuropsychological.
So I mean, and the courts have, so your courts have actually. The next thing is even with, I think the other portion you folks are upset about are the status hearings, but the reality is you folks have status hearings anyway, because I mean, I show up, excuse me. I did not like since. Sorry about that. You folks have status hearings anyway with probation and the like. I mean, so adding two other status hearings shouldn't be an extra burden.
We understand the intent. However, there's already a provision for the Department of Health to be able to file, they can come before us, they can call us, they can email us and say, hey, we want to come before a hearing and say that we don't think this 404 defendant should be there. In fact, up until 2021, they routinely appeared at every single hearing where we had a motion to transfer a defendant to the custody of the Director of Health pending the exam, pending the 404 exam. They also routinely filed motions to ask us to reconsider our finding of necessity when we transferred people into the custody.
That was before we had this huge shortage in labor in Department of Health. But same thing with regular criminal cases where the courts require status hearings. I mean, the defendant at any time can petition the court. So by having a status hearing for those in 704, we do not forget the mentally ill defendants. Instead of prioritizing criminal defendants over those who are mentally ill, which is what the judiciary is doing now with status hearing for criminal defendants, but not those who are mentally ill.
We have routinely fitness, so when a defendant is found unfit to proceed, we have a review hearing every 30, 60, 90 days depending on the recommendation of the Department of Health's doctors. We have routine review hearings for all those people.
Then, then this just adds one more, which is on the 14th day.
It would add two more because it would be the 14th and the 30th.
90 days.
Well, we don't do that for 404s because they haven't actually been found unfit yet. So the people who are, the people that you're talking about in this particular section
Yes, I understand.
are the people who have not been found unfit. They've been found by necessity to have to be transferred to the Director of Health.
Forgotten because they haven't been found unfit. That's the problem. That's the reason why we're requiring the status hearings because they are being forgotten.
We have a hearing, there is a hearing set on its determination of their fitness to proceed. We have a hearing set.
Then you don't mind having an additional to require a for every two weeks, one week, every, just adding two additional review hearings to ensure that they are not being forgotten because people are having a hard time finding examiners?
There is a hearing set already. There is already a hearing set for all of these individual people. The hearings that are being required from this bill are for everybody who's committed on a 404 to have to come back with a doctor's report.
No, it doesn't require a doctor's report. It just requires a status hearing.
If we don't have a doctor's report, we wouldn't be able to determine whether or not they still need to be there or not.
Okay.
That's the question being asked.
Judicial discretion then, right, whether or not to require a doctor's report, whether or not to require those other things, because all those other status hearings I show up on, it doesn't require any of those other reports by the courts. It's all because of judicial discretion. My, our, the legislature's concern is that people are being forgotten.
Nobody is being forgotten. All of those, every single individual who is committed under a 404 has a return hearing set when they are committed. There is not, they're not just sitting in there. They are, they have a return hearing set as soon as they are committed.
So the reports I'm getting from criminal defense attorneys that sometimes because they have difficulty finding examiners and for petty misdemeanors or misdemeanors and ending up staying there longer than their sentence, those are just anecdotal and should be ignored.
No, those are not, that's not that we're not finding examiners. It's the examiners are asking us for extensions of time for those. That's why we did Act 26 in order to try and stop that, keep the nonviolent petty misdemeanors. People who were ending up sitting in, not in the hospital, they were actually in OTC for the most part, but sitting there for 30, 60, 90 days waiting for their examination to come back. Instead, we did Act 26 in order to get those people immediately into either, into the hospital so they could be evaluated for ACT involuntary hospitalization, and we could hook them up with AMHD services upon their release, and well, now it's 14 days. So those people are a different subset of the people we're talking about. The people we're talking about under 404 are when a defendant comes, defense attorney comes in before the court, they move for a three-panel examination, and they say, because of the way the defendant is presenting to me, or because I have this information that that they have a diagnosis, a serious mental illness, and they're decomping whatever's going on, throwing feces in the, in DCR custody or whatnot, and we therefore believe that it is necessary for this person to be committed to the custody of the Director of Health pending the examination. The examination's getting ordered. Most times the examination's already ordered and the return is.
I mean, that's the point. The point is because, you know, I'm just arguing with you. And frankly, because I used to be criminal defense attorney, I do know that status hearings are usually not such a big a deal as you're claiming it to be. So I don't have any further questions. Okay, moving on. Any other questions for SB 955? Okay, for SB 1613 relating to cannabis, first up, Office of the Public Defender in support.
We're missing Act 31228.
Sorry, sorry. SB 1228. Ah, I went just wanting to get to cannabis already. Sorry. Relating to Child Welfare Services, first up, Judiciary in support. Next, we have Director Yamani in support. Are you present, Vice Chair Daisy Hartsfield?
Good morning Chairs, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. On behalf of DHS Director Yamani, I'm Daisy Hartsfield, the Social Services Division Administrator. The department did submit written testimony. I just wanted to add that we are requesting for an additional member to be added to the work group, and that would be an individual from the department's Child Welfare Services branch, and the reason for that request to the amendment is so that we can have someone from Child Welfare at the table at work group discussions so that they can provide the perspective from CWS. I'm available for any other questions. Otherwise, we stand by our testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Office of Wellness and Resiliency in support. Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support. National Center for Youth Law, Dana Matsunami in support. Are you present? Okay, come on up.
Aloha Chairs, Vice Chairs, Committee Member. My name is Dana Matsunami. I'm a child welfare lawyer at the National Center for Youth Law. I live here in Hawaii, and I work full-time with foster youth in our state. The National Center for Youth Law is in strong support of SB 1228. We all know that youth in Hawaii foster care have terrible at times and sometimes even tragic outcomes. Child welfare cases determine nearly every critical aspect of a young person's life when they're in state custody, where and whom, where and with whom they live, where they go to school, whether and how often they see their family, and more. And right now, within that court process, there's no one who has the responsibility and authority to advocate for what the young person specifically wants. In listening sessions and community meetings over the past two years, in part through the Malama Ohana Working Group, we have heard youth say, how can you make decisions that change our lives forever without ever hearing from us? Another youth described foster care in Hawaii as a system of luck. Some are lucky and have an adult in their case who goes above and beyond to listen to and advocate for their needs. Many are not. This bill is a vital step towards ensuring that no young person in Hawaii's future is left a chance. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Office of Hawaiian Affairs in support, I think I read that. Hawaii Youth Services Network, Judith Clark, please proceed.
Aloha Chairs, members of the committee. I'm Judith Clark, Executive Director of Hawaii Youth Services Network, and we support this bill. The Malama Ohana Working Group went through a very extensive process of identifying needs and developing recommendations for improving the child welfare system. This includes reducing delays in legal proceedings and ensuring access to legal representation for youth. This bill will create the working group that's necessary to develop plans for implementing these important recommendations. Thank you for this opportunity to testify.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Hawaii Children's Action Network speaks in support. Marilyn Yamamoto Hawaii Coalition for Child Protective Reform in support. Epic Ohana Hopes Initiative in support. Shayna Kokila Hawaii Coalition for Child Protective Reform in support. Melissa Mayo, are you present on Zoom in support?
She's not present on Zoom chair.
Darah Carlin is providing comments. Kiola Pagud in support. Karen Worthington in support. Ellen Oy in support. Laurie Tocchiki in support. Anybody else wishing to testify on SB 1228? Seeing none, members, any questions? Daisy Hartsfield, and I guess also Dana Matsunami for National Center for Youth Law. My big question is, we passed a similar bill earlier regarding working group. The earlier bill puts the working group under Office of Wellness and Resilience, and this one puts it under the judiciary, which is preferable. Let's go Matsunami.
I think it's a slightly different working group that you're referring to. There's the, the one that I think you're referring to is a larger mission, more around like general child welfare outcomes. This working group is specific to youth's right to legal counsel in the case, so it is housed within the judiciary.
Okay.
Yep, and I would have responded similarly.
Okay, so it doesn't matter if we pass both them?
Correct, because they will address different issues.
Okay, it's just that the people in both may end up having to work. Okay, more jobs.
Correct, you might have the same people into different work groups.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yeah, no, I don't have one. I need one more person. Can someone call? Can, we're going to recess for quorum. Following the 9:30 calendar for the joint session of Health, Human Services, and Judiciary, saying protocols, procedures apply from the nine o'clock calendar. We are going to limit this to one minute. We have a huge amount of testimony. For those on Zoom, audio will be muted, video disabled, and will shortly before it's your turn to testify. Technical glitch, give your time to testify. We're going to have to move on to the next person due to time constraints. So first up, we have Office of the Public Defender in support. Next, Attorney General providing comments. Department of Human Services providing comments. Department of Taxation providing comments. Okay, come on up.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committees, according to Piper Department of Taxation, the only thing I have to add to our comments are the revenue estimates that did come in. These are all in millions of dollars for tax year. 2026, 2.8 gain, 27 would be a 2.9 gain, 28 would be a 3.0 gain, 29 would be a 3.1 gain, 30 would be a 3.2 gain, and 31 would be a 3.2 gain. I would note there's a low level of confidence in these numbers, given that we're making estimates on currently clandestine operations. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I see Steve, all here in opposition. Come on up. You have one minute. Thank you very much. And I see Steve on here in opposition. Come on up. You have one minute.
Morning, chairs, vice chairs, members of the committee. Uh, we stand in strong opposition to Senate Bill sixteen thirteen. As public officials, I think our first job is to do no harm, and this bill would do harm. Uh, what kind of message we'll be sending to our kids that a now powerful drug is legalized and the stamp of approval is placed on it. We're telling them that marijuana is safe, and it's not for many people. We have many more near daily users. And the problem with that, with the increased potency is we have increases for teens, we have increases for adults, and it follows the Pareto principle that a smaller percentage is going to consume most of it. So research is forty percent of the users are, are daily users. That means when they go into school or working, that's daily users. They account for eighty percent of the marijuana that is sold in this country. So eighty percent of your tax dollars at these stores is going to be for them. So I don't think we want to be in the addiction for profit business. I hope you folks don't. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, at this time, we're gonna recess this and continue on with the decision making for nine o'clock calendar. And after that, we will continue on with that testimony. Thank you very much. Calling, uh recalling the nine o'clock calendar for decision making, we have quorum now. So first up for HHS, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with technical amendments. We're, we're gonna defect date this to December thirty one, twenty fifty, um noting the late testimony Department of Health. We're also gonna blank out the appropriation and add it, add in tech amendments as necessary for clarity and consistency. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Pass with amendments. Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote, SB seven oh nine.
Yes, Senate Bill seven oh nine, recommendation of the chairs to pass uh with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Senator Hashimoto is excused. Senator Kaila Colole is excused. Senator Favela.
Aye.
Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
Same recommendation for JDC. Any questions or concerns? Not, Senator Gabbard.
On SB seven oh nine, the recommendations to pass with amendments, Chair Rhodes.
Aye.
Vice Chair Woodsize. Senator Chang.
Aye.
Senator San Ben Matur.
Aye.
Senator Owa.
Aye.
Those are passes.
For SB nine fifty five, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments. Um, we are just, we're gonna reduce the number of qualified examiners from three down to one. Um, and we, any technical and grammatical changes necessary to account for the singular examiner? Any comments, questions, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Yes, Senate Bill nine fifty five, recommendation of the chairs to pass with amendments. Three members are present. Any reservations? Any no's? Right, oh, Senator Hashimoto.
Thank you.
Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
On SB nine fifty five, uh JDC, the recommendation from JDC is the same. Any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Senator Gabbard.
Um, SB nine fifty five, all members present, are there any no votes or reservations?
No.
One no vote for Senator Owa, and that's a passes.
Okay, um, for SB twelve twenty eight, Chair's recommendation is to pass this with amendments. We are gonna add to the working group a member of the men- of the Domestic Violence Center. And tech amendments. Domestic Violence Center? The Domestic Violence Community, excuse me, a member of, well, you know, the Domestic Violence Action Center.
That's it, that's it.
No, we wanna make sure it's specific. Okay, um, just to ensure, we're gonna add in a member of the Domestic Violence Action Center to the working group and pass with technical amendments. We're gonna blank out the appropriation date. Add in the defect date of December thirty one, twenty fifty. Um, conversation needs to continue. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Pass with amendments. Vice Chair for the vote, SB twelve twenty eight.
Aye, with amendments, four members are present. Any reservations? Any no's? Recommendation is adopted, Chair.
For JDC, members, same recommendation. Any questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard.
Members present, any no votes or reservations? Hearing none, the members passes.
Okay, and with that, we are adjourned on the nine o'clock. Recalling the nine thirty calendar on SB sixteen thirteen. Um, next up, sorry, thank you. We have Hawaii Department of Agriculture providing comments. Next, we have Health Resources Administration providing comments. Um, I see Office of the Public Defender finally showing up. Come on up. You have one minute.
Oh, good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Sunny Gannon and Deputy Public Defender. We support this bill with an amendment. And we'd like to read it into the record. We believe that HRS two ninety one E dash sixty one, which discusses operating a vehicle under the influence of any drug, uh still controls. Uh, we suggest the deletion of Part Four, Section Five through Section Nine. We believe that this complicates the law and will lead to further dismissals. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next up, we have Department of Budget and Finance providing comments. Honolulu Police Department, Raymond Ikihara in opposition. Oh, not on Zoom. Present.
Morning, chairs, vice chairs, committee members. My name is Ernest Fubal. I'm a lieutenant with the Narcotics Vice Division of the Honolulu Police Department. I'm here on behalf of my major, Rinar Ikihara, the, uh, here to testify that the Honolulu Police Department opposes this bill. We have submitted written testimony and we stand on that testimony. I will be available for any comments or questions if there are any. I thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. And I see um also Andrew Goff showing up for Attorney General providing comments. Come on up.
Morning, chairs, vice chairs and members. Andrew Goff, Deputy Attorney General, do have our written comments and a few suggested amendments, and I'll be available with questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have HSAC um in opposition, Alan Johnson. Come on up.
Aloha, chairs, uh vice chairs, distinguished members. I'm Alan Johnson, Chair of the Hawaii Subs Abuse Coalition. HSAC opposes this bill for legalization until a prevention program can be implemented first, and here's why. There's general agreement that cannabis use is not healthy for young people. Less harm adults, more harm kids. Their brains are still developing, can suffer from a loss of IQ, impairments in reasoning, judgment, emotional balance. And these impairments can last for decades, affecting just when they need those brain functions the most for jobs, having relationships and family. Some kids are getting scary with schizophrenia. And there is a growing trend. The evidence is clear that youth perceive cannabis to be safe. That's a major health concern. Once they are adults with fully developed brains, they can make their own decisions. But as kids with developing brains, we say this is serious. So let's pre-warn our youth and inform parents before legalization, which some states have recommended. So, and we want to have a running start, not a hope to catch up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Jacqueline Moore, Big Island Grown Dispensaries in support. Are you for? Okay, Jacqueline, come on up. You have one minute.
Thank you so much. Uh, I just want to say first and foremost, thank you for keeping this discussion alive. It needs to be addressed. Big Island Grown stands in strong support of SB sixteen thirteen, more specifically creating a regulatory framework that addresses the entirety of the plant. When I'm listening to the testimony right now, I need everyone to really understand the reality, which is recreational is already here. Okay, there is complete confusion in the marketplace. I'm not even talking about local, traditional, unregulated market. I'm talking about product coming over from the mainland completely riddled with pesticides and so- uh solvents. There needs to be some basic consumer protections in place. Regardless of what philosophically we, but we believe about adult use or legalization efforts or not, it's happening now. And the legislature, I hope, will pass something to acknowledge the fact that these pop-up illicit uh dispensaries are marketing to residents and tourists alike. They're not age-gating for kids. There's absolutely no care or awareness for that. So doing something inactivity is actually creating the very thing that people are afraid of.
Very much, Jacqueline. Tai Chang, Hawaii Cannabis Industry Association. Tai, you're present? Okay, moving on. Jenny Fouch, Hawaii HIDTA in opposition. Come on up.
Good morning, chairs, vice chairs and committee. I'm Jenny Fouch from the Hawaii High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area. This is Gary Yabuda. He's the director. I want to express our concerns uh regarding the issues associated with community health and safety if SB sixteen thirteen is passed. Please vote no. Cannabis use is a public health concern that will have lasting impacts on our youth and on our environment. This is not the source of revenue that our state needs in order to improve the welfare of its citizens. There's so much discussion around the income that this will generate for our state, but there's rarely a conversation about what the additional cost is to our health, law enforcement, and education systems. We must prioritize the health, safety, and well-being of our citizens. I urge the committee to consider the long-term consequences that could arise from allowing the use of recreational marijuana and reject this proposal. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I, can I just say something really quick on behalf of the HIDA?
Okay, go on.
I'm sorry.
Real, real.
I just want to explain what the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area is. It's under the Executive Office of the President, Office of National Drug Control Policy. In nineteen ninety, the Hawaii HIDA became a high-intensity drug trafficking.
Okay, I'm sorry, you did not register. We need to go register.
Oh, I'll do it. Yeah, I'll sign up right now.
Okay.
I think this is important.
We have a lot of people who have registered. We need to go through their names, and then you can come and testify.
What do I sign, ma'am?
Um, I don't know. So, next up, Hawaii Christian Coalition in opposition. Margaret Mejia, are you present, Margaret? Okay, next, Nikos Leverens, Drug Policy Forum of Hawaii in support.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Nikos Leverens with the Drug Policy Forum of Hawaii in strong support of this bill. Um, you know, it's really high time that, and pun intended, that Hawaii recalibrated its policy on cannabis and moved toward adult use legalization. Um, when we compare the relative harms of cannabis uh compared to, say, alcohol, which kills one hundred and seventy thousand people a year, and yet it is a illicit substance. I would also note that the continued criminalization of children is not in their interest or nor is it in their family's interest. And the arrest data shows that criminalization of cannabis reaches hundreds of juveniles in their families per year. Um, so uh to my friends on the uh sectarian side of the aisle, I ask them to take a look at the war on cannabis, look, take a look at the drug war and to seek justice and to defend the oppressed. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, I see Michael Galloio, Pride at Work on Zoom in support. Please proceed. One minute.
I, yes, aloha. Michael Galloio Junior, President of Pride at Work, pronounce he/him. We stand in strong support of this bill. It is ti- it is time to actually legalize uh adult use, recreational use of uh cannabis. Uh, all the problems that they, everybody's saying that this will bring are already on our shores, and we are not addressing them because we do not have the resources to do so. And some are just turning a blind eye. This is a uh social justice issue. Uh, there is no uh scientific data that uh marijuana is a gateway drug. What is a gateway to uh those higher, those illicit substances is poverty, discrimination, hatred, and bigotry. As well as, so we encourage you that they should be fighting those things if we want to end our um problem with war on drugs. Uh, end the war on drugs and deal with those such situations. So we encourage you to pass this bill. We thank you for hearing it. Thank you for having the um the strength to do this, and we encourage you to pass this bill. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Tina Yamaki, Retail Merchants of Hawaii in opposition. Are you present, Tina?
They're not available on Zoom.
Okay, next, Tommy Machika, Tax Foundation of Hawaii, providing comments on Zoom. Tom, are you present?
Uh, aloha, Chair, Senator Winvenetara. This is Jay McMillan on behalf of Tommy Machika for the Tax Foundation of Hawaii. We have submitted some comments on the measure. Um, our comments are directed towards the new tax. Um, we generally do, do not agree with the um proposition of a new tax that can be classified as a sting tax. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Judaya McRoberts, Kauai Hemp Company in opposition. Are you present on?
Sorry, they're, no, uh, they're not present on Zoom.
Okay, not present on Zoom. Casey Rothstein, Green Aloha Limited in support. Please proceed, Casey. You have one minute.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to give testimony today. Uh, my name is Casey Rothstein. I'm the CEO of Green Aloha. We are the Kauai Medical Cannabis License. Um, as my colleague uh Jaclyn Moore said, uh recreational cannabis is already here. Um, it is in stores all over Hawaii. Uh, the farm bill has allowed hemp to be sold, and hemp is the same as cannabis, and processed hemp makes the same uh same intoxicating uh products as cannabis does. So this bill will actually regulate the industry. Um, and it's legislature's job to regulate things for the matter of public health and public safety. Um, to do nothing, to not address this, doesn't keep recreational cannabis from happening. It doesn't protect the keiki. It just does exactly that. It does nothing. So I urge you to pass this bill and encourage your colleagues in the House not to do nothing.
Thank you very much, Casey. Next, I see Rick Collins, Hawaii Public Health Institute, providing comments. Please proceed, Rick. You have one minute. Is that, okay, I guess no, nobody. Is Rick Collins there? I thought that was him. Um, Karen O'Keefe, Hawaii Marijuana Policy Project in support. Karen O'Keefe, please proceed. You have one minute.
Apologies. I'm Karen O'Keefe, Director of State Policies at the Marijuana Policy Project. We support SB sixteen thirteen and HACR's suggested amendments. Cannabis prohibition has not worked. Nineteen percent of adults in Hawaii admit using cannabis in the past year. Due to prohibitions, consumers either buy illicit cannabis that can be contaminated or laced, or they buy hemp synthesized intoxicants, which are readily available in the state to both children and adults. Regulated cannabis is far safer than unregulated and gas station cannabis. We now have more than a decade of government survey data that shows that teens cannabis use has mostly decreased in legalization states post-legalizations. Adults should be free to make their own decisions about cannabis, and they deserve a safe, regulated product. Many cannabis consumers, including my husband, use it as a pain reliever or for sleep, and it improves their well-being in many cases. Please support the bill for freedom, justice, and safety. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, Carolyn La Lusa, Noah Botanicals in support on Zoom. Carolyn, are you present?
Yes, they're here on Zoom, Chair.
You have one minute, Carolyn. Turn on your audio and turn on your video.
I am not sure whether the video is not on. My camera's on.
Okay.
But I'll get started. Aloha, chairs, uh senators. Legalization is the regulation that we lack today. There's an epidemic of illegal operators with unlicensed retail cannabis dispensaries selling cannabis labeled as hemp. On Oahu last year, there were ten illegal operators. This year, there are over forty. You can find cannabis at the airport, near schools, in mini-marts, and it's available for online sales and home delivery. The lack of regulation and enforcement coordination continues to endanger the public as many of these products are contaminated and available to anyone, including our keiki. We need comprehensive legislation that includes a framework to assign a single authority to manage the complexities of this plant at all stages of life. So hemp, cannabis, and finished product. I think we can all agree that this is a public health and public safety issue, and inaction is unacceptable. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. I see Tai Chang here, Hawaii Cannabis Industry Association. Are you gonna provide testimony or stand on it? Okay, you have one minute.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. My name is Tai Chang. I'm uh Chair of the Hawaii Cannabis Association. We're in support of this bill. Hawaii is now the last democratically controlled state not to legalize cannabis. Twenty-four other states have done so, including three Republican-controlled states. Many of the arguments we hear today were the same arguments were brought back then. No state has decided to reverse its legalization of cannabis. In twenty twenty seven, Marijuana Business Daily believes that made in America cannabis will total fifty-three point five billion dollars. The Hawaii medical uh market is only one percent of that large number currently. The Biden administration has started rescheduling, and the DOJ and HHS have both agreed to reschedule cannabis to Schedule Three. The new federal administration has also shown that it's willing to reschedule. Trump voted uh yes on Florida's legalization bill. His newly confirmed HHS secretary says he believes in legalization of cannabis, and Elon Musk has smoked cannabis.
Okay, next up, United Public Workers in opposition. Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Larry Smith, Kapuna Caucus of Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. Brian Baker, um Hinamaka in opposition. Hawaii Family Forum in opposition. Law Enforcement Action Partnership in support. Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus in support. Hawaii Smart Approaches to Marijuana in opposition. The Coalition for Drug Free Hawaii. the Coalition for Drug Free Hawaii in Opposition, Luana Peterson Reimagining Public Safety in Support, Hawaii Afternoon Alliance Providing Comments. Ayman El Swahithi, are you present in Opposition? Ayman. Okay, moving on. Scott Kobayashi in Opposition. Scott.
He's present on Zoom, chair.
Oh, on Zoom. It was supposed to be in person. Okay, please proceed, Scott. Scott, turn on your audio and turn on your mic.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go on. You have one minute.
Yeah, I'm just voicing my opposition. I am a pastor and I've been serving in youth ministry for eighteen years and I just want to voice my opposition. I've just seen so many youth of mine that have been on drugs and just, just lose their hope in school and their future and their careers and, but I also hear great stories of them getting off drugs and getting their life back together. So I just want to testify as a youth pastor and as a father that I am opposed to this bill. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Landis Lum in Opposition. Landis, are you present? Come on up.
Aloha Chairs and Members. I'm a family and addiction medicine doc. Landis Lum.
Thank you.
I am an addiction and family medicine doc. Driving stoned is driving drunk. My patient had a head-on collision killing a tourist, her daughter in the ICU for four months, still in pain years later. Twenty-seven percent drive stoned on a daily basis. Since legalized in Colorado, cannabis traffic deaths increased one hundred thirty-eight percent. By age forty-five, users have brain damage on MRI, older facial age, less happiness, more are on welfare. For every dollar in legalization tax revenue, states would incur four dollars in costs. Legalization increases teen cannabis use. Elton John is addictive and leads to other drugs. Legalizing marijuana in Canada and America is one of the greatest mistakes of all time. Only ten percent use it only for health reasons. Most use it for fun. Do we want to leave our keiki a legacy of?
Much, Dr. Lum. Next, we have Joy Chinin also in Opposition. Joy, you're present.
My name is Joy Chinin and I'm a mother and grandmother. And I appreciated Dr. Lum's testimony right now that he gave these statistics. And you know, when I look at this bill, I'm opposed to this S B sixteen thirteen because if the main reason for legalizing marijuana is for government income, that is not a good reason. The consequences are too great. The consequences outweigh that benefit. And you and I are here to do what is good for our keiki and our families. They are our future. Please, we don't, I don't want this drug in our Hawaii. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Emily Sarasa in Support. Emily, are you present?
Morning Senators. Thank you for letting me testify. My name is Emily Sarasa. I'm testifying in my individual capacity. I'm hearing a lot of concerns today about the youth and as someone who was young not so long ago, I feel like I want to raise the issue that's, well, the point's already been raised that the youth are already consuming this product. They're getting it from the black market. They're getting it from gas stations and smoke shops. It's already happening. So when people say here in this room that they want to legalize, they're saying they want to preserve the status quo and continue this harm to our communities. If we want kids to stop using cannabis, we need better education. I got a dare education. It sucked. It did not stop me. It did not stop my friends and I think that is more harmful. So I urge you to pass this bill out of committee. Make amendments if you need to, delay the start date if you need to allocate additional resources to the D O H so can actually ramp up the education because they do not have enough right now. Let it pass out of this committee. Let it go through the legislative process. More than half of our residents support this. So I hope that you will too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Daniel Chinin in Opposition. Daniel, oh, in person, okay.
Morning Chairs, Vice Chairs and Members of the Committee. Thank you so much for this time. I want to honor your time with the fifty seconds I have left, so I'll just go straight to it. I'm a father, husband and pastor and member of the community and I stand in strong opposition to this measure. As the person before me shared, that marijuana is already in our streets and it's true. So we shouldn't be opening up more opportunity. We should be decreasing that opportunity. Just to give you guys an idea how easily accessible it is. My son's in high school. He gets offered a joint for five bucks if he wants it. He gets offered edibles just in the classroom. So it's there. It's out there in our schools. The medical marijuana card has been abused as well. We have, I have a family friend who's in his mid twenties. He just got diagnosed with schizophrenia this past year of using medical marijuana. So thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Brett Colbus in Opposition. Are you present, Brett?
Yes, ma'am Chair. Mahalo, ma'am. Chair Sam Winnebago, Chair Rhodes, Committee Members. My name is Brett Colbus. I'm a twenty-six-year Navy veteran, a retired civil servant. During my civil servant career, I was the Alcohol Drug Control Officer for the U.S. Pacific Fleet Submarine Force here in Hawaii. During that time, I had the opportunity to attend many N A and A A meetings. I talked to hundreds of addicts during those meetings and ninety percent of them indicated that they started, got on the road to their drug addiction through smoking marijuana. So the misnomer that it's not a gateway drug, I disagree with. And I would say fifty percent of those said that they started when they were in high school or before. So I strongly oppose this bill. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Jermaine Myers in Opposition. Jermaine, are you present on Zoom?
They're not present on Zoom, chair.
Ron Yoshida in Opposition. Is that Ron on Zoom?
Aloha Chairs, aloha Chairs and Members of the Joint Committee. My name is Ron Yoshida and I stand in heartfelt opposition to Senate Bill sixteen thirteen. As was so clearly explained in the movie Lilo and Stitch Hawaii is about ohana and ohana means that no one is left behind. I believe that if we pass this bill, our ohana will be negatively impacted and many will be left behind. As a former state certified substance abuse counselor, I have witnessed firsthand the negative effects that marijuana use has had on families. And with the potency of marijuana today being so much higher than before, today's users don't just experience a buzz, but consistent use can cause mental, serious mental and psychological damage that can last a lifetime. A vote in opposition to this bill is a vote in favor of our families. I encourage you strongly, please vote in favor of our families, our ohana, so that no one is left behind. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Robert Benz in Opposition. Is that you, Robert?
Hello, this is Robert Benz, Certified Organic USDA Certified Hemp Farmer and a member of the Hemp Task Force. The Hemp Task Force and the farmers were very clear in the opposition of including adult use, which is federally illegal with what is federally legal hemp. As addition to that, this bill, it's not about legalization. It's about furthering the oligarchy of just eight dispensaries. Massachusetts, which this bill is still basically copying, has been plagued with corruption. There's so many news articles about the corruption. Like cash cow has dried up, the green rush is over. The amount of money that they think that they could make is not at all reasonable. You can't over-regulate, over-tax and think that this is gonna be able to attract anyone out of the legacy.
Thank you very much, Robert.
Also need to have twenty-one year, twenty-one year old.
I'm sorry, Robert. It's other people's time right now. Thank you.
It's about bills that.
Drew Daniels, next, in support. Drew, please proceed.
Aloha Chairs and Committee Members. My name is Drew Daniels. I am a cannabis industry professional. I've traveled all over the continent and met people from Hawaii that have moved away and they can't wait for the opportunity to come home. I see this bill as an opportunity to set up the framework for an industry that has a very bright future. As someone else mentioned, no states have gone back. This isn't going backwards. It's going forwards. When we see federal legalization, I really hope that Hawaii is in a place to build up their farmers and local workforce because I see this as an opportunity to do something right and to keep the workforce home as well as maybe even bring some back. I stand on my written testimony that kind of kind of rebutes the, the misnomers and the reefer madness style kind of anecdotes about.
Thank you very much, Mr. Daniels. Next, we have Dr. Rothstein in Support. Are you present, Mark Rothstein? On Zoom.
They're present on Zoom, chair.
Please proceed, Dr. Rothstein.
Can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed. You have fifty-three minutes. Seconds, seconds.
Sure, sorry. Aloha. I'm Mark Rothstein, a licensed physician in Hawaii and Ohio. I have worked as a family physician for over four decades. I strongly.
And can you turn on your video? Okay, please proceed. Keep going.
I am, I strongly support S B sixteen thirteen. I first saw opiate abuse disorder and PTSD firsthand in rural Appalachia. Many of my patients self-medicated with marijuana to alleviate their symptoms. Let me address some misconceptions and anecdotal testimony that I have heard previously today. Yes, there's a cannabis use disorder similar to alcohol and tobacco. The studies have shown that legalizing adult use cannabis.
Rothstein, we have so many testifiers, so we're gonna need to cut you off. We're down to one minute. Next, we have Jason Handley in Opposition. Jason, are you present on Zoom?
They're not present on Zoom, chair.
Hey Lynn Last Rothstein in Support. Lynn, I, I thought I saw you back there. Are you present on Zoom?
They're also not present on Zoom.
Okay. Mikela Kobayashi.
I'm, I'm here.
Okay, please turn on your audio and please turn on your video.
Okay, I don't know. Ah, there we go. I support the legislation. I would like to walk into a licensed shop where the product has been tested. I'm a seventy-five-year-old businesswoman.
Did you say your full name? Sorry.
Lynn Last Rothstein. I'm seventy-five years old, a former public school teacher and a businesswoman. I have used cannabis for many years. I've never progressed to anything stronger. I use it the way someone would a glass of wine. I don't drink because alcohol is linked to several different kinds of cancers. Many cancers in the U.S. according to World Health Organization are directly caused by alcohol consumption. I abstain from cannabis when I travel and I have no problem with that. I believe that all these smoke shops all over the islands are a danger to everybody. Anyone can walk in there and buy whatever they have with no testing, no regulation. It can be contaminated. It can be adulterated. Adult use would have everything tested to make sure that it is safe for use for over twenty-one years old.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rothstein. Okay, moving on. Mikela Kobayashi in Opposition. Are you present, Mikela?
Yes.
Okay, please proceed. You have also one minute.
Okay, mahalo for your hard work. I know this is not an easy job, so I appreciate everything that you all do. I'm Mikela Kobayashi and I strongly oppose this bill. I'm a native Hawaiian. I'm a mom. I've worked with teenagers for over ten years as a teacher and as a youth pastor. And in the past, we've heard many testimonies from a wide variety of community leaders and members such as police, healthcare workers, cancer society, DOE educators, principals, counselors, pastors, parents and grandparents. And we are all afraid of the negative effects that the consequences of this bill will have. We are the ones who will be dealing with the people and picking up the pieces. And simply put, we're just afraid that the negative consequences will outweigh the positives. I'm a product of parents, parents who are adults and used marijuana and I was removed from my home. And so I strongly oppose this bill. Please vote no. Thank you so much for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have Josiah in Support. Josiah, are you present on Zoom?
He's not present on Zoom, chair.
Andre Wooton in Support. Andre, are you present on Zoom?
They're also not present on Zoom.
Okay, we have eighty-six individuals registering in opposition, also eighty-six individuals registering in support. And no one else having registered to testify. Anybody else wishing to testify in S B sixteen thirteen? Okay, let's go with this person in front first. State your full name and one minute.
My name is Anthony Alien. I'm a United States of Ganja. And as one of the previous testifiers mentioned, cannabis is already being sold by children, two children in the school. And so continuation of the status quo just means that situation is going to continue. It's a question of if we're going to do more of the same or are we going to try something different approach to get different results? Legalizing cannabis market is the only hope for ending the black market. A vote against this bill is a vote to continue the failed prohibition system and the black market that thrives under it. As long as a black market exists, children will have access since regulation of an underground market is impossible. We have to stop criminalizing cannabis and end the war against it. This bill is, I hope everyone understands that criminalizing something doesn't affect its availability. It simply reclassifies the providers as criminals. I knew someone that was in prison when they criminalized tobacco and there wasn't a day that they could not get cigarettes. It just went from being legal to being a crime. And you can't keep drugs out of a maximum security prison. So what chance do we have of keeping?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, there's somebody on Zoom who may have registered and I went over. Could you identify yourself? Is this a sixteen thirteen? You have one minute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please proceed.
Aloha Senators, my name is Judaya McRoberts and I am the president of Kauai Hemp Company, Hawaii's largest certified organic hemp farm and CBD producer. I appreciate the opportunity to submit testimony and respectfully urge amendments to address serious concerns regarding proposed regulations on hemp. The proposed thirty-milligram THC limit for tinctures far more restrictive than the federal farm bill's zero-point-three-percent THC standard, effectively eliminating most full-spectrum tinctures and severely damaging local businesses. The regulation would cripple Hawaii's hemp industry, making it impossible for businesses like mine to compete and survive. I strongly urge the committee to align with the farm bill's zero-point-three-percent THC standards to maintain product integrity and house and industry viability. The House version of this bill, I did make amendments to reflect these requests and changes that I've just provided. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, you're next. We're gonna go by row. So come on up. You have, identify yourself. You have one minute.
Hello Committee, I am Cal Chinin and I am strongly opposed to this. It's already been shared that there's a number of people waiting to come back to Hawaii to grow marijuana. If we see already illegal shops popping up right now, can we imagine how much more is going to be sold when we legalize this? Can we imagine how much more of our youth are going to be exposed to this? The biggest problem among our young people here is keeping our best and brightest here in Hawaii. How many of our youth are going to be damaged? How much of their motivation will be killed as they are exposed to this? I urge you on behalf of our young people and the future of Hawaii. You guys are representatives of the best and brightest. Let's do this for the next generation as well. Let's keep marijuana out.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else on the first, I see Lambert, Captain Lambert, come on up. Identify.
Good afternoon Chairs, Vice Chairs, Members of the Community, Mike Lambert speaking on behalf of the L E. So I know we submitted written testimony, but I wanted to provide you guys with additional information for decision-making regarding what was discussed. So for example, in Mexico, in regards to regulation to making sure that it's safe, they distributed three thousand licenses. There's only a thousand licensed locations are able, able to be checked at a cost of six-point-five-four million.
I'm sorry, Doc, Captain Lambert, are you in opposition? Comment?
Sorry, I'm in, I'm in opposition and I want to provide information for decision-making.
Thank you.
Okay, sorry. So, and your income was twenty-one point eight million at a regulation budget of six-point-five-four, meaning that at a third of the income, only a third of the regulation, locations are regulated. In regards to arrest data, in Honolulu, twenty-two thousand people are arrested for all crimes and only forty-six of them were for marijuana. And just to let everyone know, a lot of times marijuana is a secondary arrest for like a warrant or something else. Finally, for this committee's consideration is that when it goes from schedule one to schedule three, that'll impact the medical market. So what will happen is if we get ahead of ourselves, okay?
And Captain Lambert, we do not have your written testimony, so please submit that later.
I apologize. I'm, I'm now with the, I'm now the director nominee for.
I understand that. We don't have.
You didn't receive it. I apologize.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else on the first row and then we're gonna go to the second row. Second row who haven't testified yet. Come on up. You have one minute.
Thank you. Gary Abuda, I'm the Executive Director.
Thank you, uh, Gary Abuda. I'm the executive director for the High Intensity Drug Trafficking Area, federal fund out of the executive office of the president. I just wanted to say that we became a high-intensity drug trafficking area in nineteen ninety because of our methamphetamine problem. That's how you qualify ominously, how you qualify. I have forty-seven years of law enforcement experience. I was the chief of police for the Maui Police Department. With these eyes, I have seen the degradation of our culture, of our island. I have friends, police friends, that can't walk like us because they fell from a helicopter or they came down in a helicopter trying to remove the invasive species known as marijuana from our indigenous forests. Will destroy our environment and our culture and our children's way of life. I see this with these forty-seven years of experience. Now I'm in prevention and treatment in my organization because I realize law enforcement alone cannot solve.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else on second row who hasn't testified? Now it goes to the third row. Anybody on the third row who has not testified? Come on up. Director. For yourself or for your director?
Yes, Brenna Hashimoto, Director of the Department of Human Resources Development. We did submit written testimony. Uh, hopefully you received it. If not, I will make sure that you get it. We have concerns about, um, three provisions that are in the current bill and how they address, uh, the workplace, the state workplace. We want to make sure that, um, not only the manufacturer distribution disposition and possession of marijuana in the workplace would not be tolerated. And there are three places in this bill that we think need to be addressed to protect our workplaces from the use of cannabis.
Thank you. And like I have directed to director um, of law enforcement, you need to submit your written testimony.
I believe it was, but if we don't, if it wasn't, we'll reset it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else in the second row? Okay, um, ACLU, come on up.
Aloha, senators. Carrie Anne Chivota, ACLU Hawaii. We strongly support this measure. More amount of enforcement will stop cannabis. It's already here. It has been here since time immemorial. It will not stop it. Second, we need to ignore the realities. There are still kids that are being arrested and adults that money into prevention, into youth programs. If we're so concerned about the harms, we would put it into what the needs are for our community. And we want to point out that this is an issue of freedom. Just as any of you can go and pick up a cocktail or or caffeine or a cookie with sugar, which many health experts say it's dangerous, people should be able to use cannabis. Let adults be adults and make decisions for themselves. Years ago, law enforcement were in these halls opposing fiercely medical cannabis, claiming that there would be drug cartels throughout our community. That has never happened. And today they're here saying, we support medical cannabis. Let's look at data. Let's make informed decisions. Let's consider risk. Let's mitigate it. Let's have social justice, and let's recognize that.
Thank you very much.
Kids are being arrested. If we care about them, we'll stop the prohibition. Mahalo.
Carrie Anne. Okay, next up. Um, ACLU. Identify yourselves and.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, Alan Clardinos Jr. I'm in strong opposition with this. I grew up in Anakui Homestead. I remember a time, plenty aloha. Neighbors take care of neighbors and malama each other and so forth. Fast forward today, Gary Abuda hit it. It's a degradation of the minds of our children, families and communities. Look at the news reports from the last two years. Homicides up eighty percent, domestic violence, but not what's not being reported is the suicides amongst our people. From Makaha to Kapale to, um, Eva to Waipahu. Our kids are in trouble. They need help. Our kids need hope, not dope. And that's why I ask that we oppose this. Thank you so much. Mahalo.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, anybody else on the second row? Okay, third row, anybody who hasn't testified? Come on up on the third row. I see you raising your hand. I'm sorry, that's the fourth row. Well, we'll start in the fourth row then. Come on up. It's okay. Just identify yourself, and you know me, I, one minute.
Aloha, Chair, Senators. Um, my name is Kimmerhorson. I am in strong opposition to this bill according to Samuel, uh, Dr. Wilkinson from the Yale School of Medicine. Marijuana is one second. Makes us susceptible to lung cancer, schizophrenia. It has three times tar inhalation in cigarettes. It's four times the carbon monoxide inhalation. It it causes cognitive impairment, so it will be increased in DUIs and risk for short and long-term psychosis, other psychotic disorders such as anxiety, restlessness, insomnia, depression, and changes in appetite. We are not California. We are not any other state. We are the Hawaiian Kingdom. Marijuana I've seen as a barrier to employment. I saw a United States Coast Guard man growing plants in his, uh, back in his home on Schofield, and he got arrested. It destroyed his career. It's not allowed on the federal level. Why should it be allowed on the state level? Uh, it's a barrier to employment, and we are not Snoop Dogg, Nicki Minaj. We are not Brittany Griner, who was imprisoned, as we all know, for a very long time in Russia.
Yes, thank you very much. Okay, um, hold on. I just want to make sure. Third row, are we done with the third row? Oh, no, you're in the last row. So, fourth row, anybody in the fourth row? Okay, who hasn't spoken yet? Come on up. I think we're down to the last row now. No, second to last, so but come on up. Can't count. Three, four, five. Okay, go ahead.
I'm a white graduate. I'm a tire farmer, fish pond worker, connected the first Hawaiian village in twenty-seventeen. President Donald Trump made it a national monument. I come from a legacy of twenty to thirty-five years from the Hawaiian Kingdom, and I'm in strong support of SB sixteen thirteen. When we vote no, first off, the senators who supported me last year, thank you. This is really for those who oppose or still guessing. A vote no, let me be clear. Voting against SB sixteen thirteen is a vote to uphold system, a systemic inequities, forfeit millions in revenue, and ignore the will of Hawaii's people. Voting no means Hawaii loses millions to other states while our schools, roads, hospitals, even state capitals remain deteriorating. Voting no means supporting systemic racism and denying second chances to those harmed by outdated laws.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, um, fourth row, anybody in fourth row, fifth row? Okay, wait a second. There's somebody here in the fifth row. Come on up. Okay, identify yourself and support or opposition or comments.
Aloha, my name is Kim Cordery, and I'm speaking on behalf of Aloha Freedom Coalition, twenty thousand followers. And also, um, behalf of my husband, I did, uh, submit a testimony. I oppose SB sixteen thirteen. And I just want to speak a little bit about my husband's experience prior to finding God, which he says is is a gateway drug that led him to many other drugs. He says that marijuana is mind-numbing and leads to a non-motivated state. Is this what we want for our people of Hawaii? It's not what I want. I don't, and I I have never taken drugs, and I was lucky to, um, have not experienced any of these things, but this is a uh, grave concern for our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, come on up. Identify yourself.
Hello, I'm Stephen Taylor in opposition of the bill. Um, what I was wanted to look at is the vision. Is what do we want in the future? Do we want, uh, yes, we failed with alcohol, and people drink, and people get drunk, and people crash cars. What do you want twenty years from now? People walking around high and crashing cars? Uh, we gave up with alcohol. It seemed like we lost the battle, but with marijuana, we still have a chance. So if we don't pass this bill, maybe we can fix what's already broken. Yeah, we know that it's easy to get weed. But do we want to keep it that way? Just look at tomorrow, not just today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else on the fifth row? Okay, come on up.
Hi, I'm with the Department of Health. So you.
Please identify yourself.
I'm Liville, the acting program manager for the Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation. You have our written testimony. Apologies, but, uh, we have submitted, and, uh, we offer comments, particularly our concerns about the health, public health impacts with increased access to cannabis. And, um, but the department does appreciate that there is strong regulatory framework that can help protect public health and safety. Uh, we also, uh, I'd like to also point out that we referenced the wrong, um, the wrong bill, and we apologize for that, but we did submit for SB sixteen thirteen.
And my vice chair pointed out, you did submit it, but for some reason it's not on my list.
Okay, thank you very much.
It is on the website, though. Thank you very much. But we don't feel, right? Okay, um, next up on the fifth row who hasn't testified. Okay, last row, wait a second, Angela. No, 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 come on up. They've been waiting here a lot longer than you have.
Martin Choi retired. When I was working, I had an injured coworker who um, lived only to be high on the job. And I watched him sacrifice his whole future. But that was, um, he's, he did not have any motivation or desire to, to, um.
So you're in opposition?
Yes, I'm in opposition, yes. And so he, I watched his life just amount to nothing because he had numerous opportunities to advance, but he would rather just drift off in in on a high on the job. So I'm in opposition to it, and, um, uh, he became an instigator to have parties, and so it it it's a um, peer pressure that caused people to want to stick to it.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else who hasn't testified on the fifth row? Last row, anybody in the last row who hasn't testified? Okay, Angie. Okay, come on up. Wait a second, not yet. Come on up at the very end. I see.
Aloha, my name is Margaret Mahian. I'm representing Hawaii Christian Coalition. Hawaii Christian Coalition has approximately thirty-five thousand members. If you add the spouses and children, we represent about a hundred thirty thousand people. I strongly oppose HSB one-six-one-three relating to cannabis. These points are taken from statistics from states who have legalized marijuana. Substantial rise in the cost of rent for residents. So in Hawaii, we already have a housing crisis. I don't think we want to add to that. Um, drug dealers move into states where marijuana has been legalized. They bring in prostitution, sex trafficking, more lethal drugs, including fentanyl, crimes, crimes, and more crimes. I don't think HPD is ready to deal with all this. And then also, um, someone also brought up all the traffic incidents, and so the hospitals as well, um, especially the emergency room. High school dropout rate increases. I work with teens. I've seen, um, lots of, um, consequences in the juvenile facility in Kapale as well as the.
Very much.
Well, I have one last thing to say. Uh, legalizing marijuana will not bring forty million into Hawaii. Instead, it would bring in lots of crimes.
Thank you very much. Anybody else, um, who hasn't testified? Okay, Angela, come on up. You got one minute.
Angela Melody Young testifying in opposition on behalf of Kapalama Neighborhood Security Watch, a grassroots movement of the Honolulu Police Department. I'm a safety coordinator. Um, so initiating this discussion on marijuana has brought together people from all sides. And as a Christian who has friends who go to Burning Man festivals and Coachella's, um, I'm personally conflicted with the, um, dealing with the pressure of having to stay and do what's trendy versus what's good for public safety and public health. Marijuana as a medical, um, legalization is good enough, as is for people who are suffering from pain and anxiety, so I personally am opposed to this, to the recreational use. Um, common illnesses such as degenerative degenerative disc conditions and spinal injuries for back pain can be alleviated from medical marijuana. Um, and joint pain and also, um, headaches can, um, be something, um, that are common illnesses, um, that get resolved from medical marijuana use.
Thank you very much.
Legalizing it at recreational is too much.
Anybody else who hasn't testified who, okay, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, moving on to decision-making. Sure. Oh, you have a question? Okay, Senator Favela. Steve Al. Okay, let's limit it to one minute, please.
Senator.
Besides the the impact already what you guys talked about over here, what about the states that is suffering now for the young children that is addicted to mental illness like Colorado? I know talking to you guys about this before. What is the statistics that you know now some of the states that is regretting it, even though they're not gonna change it, but they're regretting it now, and one of them is Colorado?
Right. What research has come out in November? A meta survey of all of the other surveys. It has shown that with teens, you have a thirteen percent increase in use, and with young adults, it's twenty-two. An earlier speaker talked about research showing a declination. That was a couple of years ago. Nora Volkov, head of the National Institute of Drug Abuse, was the introducer for that study two years ago. She came out last month, January of twenty-five, to say because the methodology was flawed, that research is no good. So we have more young people using it. We have more young adults, and it's associated with schizophrenia. It's associated with suicidal, uh, ideation, and it it just causes more more problems. So I think that's short answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, go ahead, um.
I have a question for prosecutor too.
Okay, Senator Rhodes.
Curiosity about the methodology on that study. Did they look at states that still, were it still illegal? Like, what was the increase in use in states that were still illegal?
What I saw in it, they looked at states that had legalized.
Okay, so they didn't try to compare it to.
Well, they did. They're smoking at thirteen percent more than the states that did not legalize it. And I think.
Not compared to what I thought I thought the comparison was before that it was legalized.
No, my understanding, it was thirteen percent higher than the states that did not legalize. And the method.
What was it before it was legalized then?
Right, the states that have legalized thirteen percent more teenagers aged twelve to seventeen use uh, marijuana than in states that have not legalized it.
But what were, but what was the comparison before the states that legalized legalized? Because there's no I I'm not sure that means anything.
Okay, well, i- if you live in a state that legalized, you're gonna have more of your teens.
Yeah, but if you hadn't legalized, if you hadn't legalized, you might have had more teens smoking anyway.
Well, that's the comparison group that is that is lower now.
Okay, I'm not. Okay, so a totally different question. So a couple of people have testified today that crime rates are going up. Is that? I don't believe that's true.
Well, I think it's fatal car collisions have gone up.
No, I'm not talking about Pakalolo, and I'm talking about in general. People are saying that, uh.
I I think it's, um, they're looking at, there are more robberies of stores, like we saw on TV here. Somebody takes a stolen truck and reverses it into an electric bike store. They have a lot more robberies like that where they steal the product. You have cartels that are coming in from Maine to California.
That's not what you had indicated to me before. My understanding, my understanding was that crime was, crime is going down on Oahu.
Oh, no, crime, no question, crime is going down overall on Oahu, but we don't have it legalized now, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Any more questions? Seeing none, um, let's proceed with decision-making? Okay, for SB sixteen thirteen, you have the votes, right? Okay, Chair's recommendation is, I I know it's a work in progress. Everybody wants to put in amendments. Chair's recommendation is to pass with only tech amendments and a defective date. It's a work in progress. We'll see how far it goes with all the amendments, um, that probably the House and later on the Senate again will put on it, but right now we're just gonna pass it only with tech amendments and a defective date. Any comments, questions or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote. Pass with amendments.
Okay, passing with amendments, Chair.
Aye.
Vice Chair votes reservations, Senator Hashimoto.
Aye.
Senator Keo Kaloli is excused. Senator Favela. Recommendation is adopted.
Same recommendation for JDC. Any questions or concerns?
Comment.
Sure, go ahead, Senator Alau.
Yeah, real quick, there's probably not a lawmaker in this building who wants to legalize marijuana as much as I do, nor know the benefits as much as I do, but after reading this bill, this is, this puts doesn't give us the freedoms while while people would be able to use and not have to fear to go to jail. It doesn't support locals selling. This this is more towards benefits of corporations, so with that, we vote no.
All right, other questions or concerns? If not, Senator Gabbard for the. If not, Senator Gaber for the vote.
Chair's recommendation on SB sixteen thirteen is to pass amendments. Chair Rhodes?
Aye.
Vice Chair votes no. Senator Chang?
Aye.
Senator Sam Bana Ventura?
Aye.
Senator Awah?
No.
The measure passes.
Thank you very much.
And with that, we are returned. Thank you, folks.